Hello, Mr. Newhouse?
I will call to order the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission meeting, May 22, 2018. Let the record note is 8:47 PM. We have a quorum. Thank you for having us this evening, and I will turn it over to the work session.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, for participating in this joint work session to discuss the update to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was last updated in November of 2013, and so the Code of Virginia requires that jurisdictions review their plans every five years and make any needed updates. So it's quite possible that should the county decide there are no needed updates, we just continue with the plan as it is, but inevitably there are updates needed. And at your places, we have copies of the PowerPoint presentation that I'll also be going through so that the audience can see what we're discussing. The purpose of tonight's work session is for staff to receive direction from the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission on the update of the comprehensive plan, wanting to keep the discussion fairly high level so that we can hit on, you know, major topics and trends, and we'll get into more detail as we continue to work with the Planning Commission based on the direction we receive this evening. The 2013 comprehensive plan update was a major re-hall of the plan. There were working groups that were appointed by the Planning Commission to concentrate on each of the chapters of the comprehensive plan, included public comment, community meetings, and ultimately, the new version of the plan was adopted. In the five years that have passed since 2013, there are not major updates necessarily needed to the plan, in our view, and we've had this conversation with the Planning Commission, and they concur. The proposal is to limit revisions to the necessary updates and also desired enhancements to support the vision of the county. So as we talk this evening, as I've mentioned before, the comprehensive plan is a 20-year plan, so things to keep in mind as we talk this evening, but also as we continue to talk over the coming months during the update process. We need to be thinking about the future population of the county and demographics. We need to be thinking about what are the future jobs going to be in the county, or that the residents in the county have. What industries would we like to attract? What types of businesses are likely to locate here? What is the future of retail? We've seen a decline in retail, more online purchasing, and so we need to think about, are we going to have the retail presence in the future that we've had in the past, and also, what are we going to do with the retail establishments that are no longer viable? Future housing needs is an important consideration. There have been some recent studies related to housing, both general housing needs and also related to affordable housing. Future government facilities and service needs, and future transportation needs. So really, in the end, what we're trying to figure out is what is our vision for Spotsylvania County in 20 years, so in about 2038, 2040? What do we expect Spotsylvania County will be? I presented a longer presentation to the Planning Commission earlier this month that focused on population, looking both at the past and at the future, because as you know, the county has experienced some very, very intense growth rates at certain points in history. During the 1990s and the early 2000s, we had high levels of annual growth rates, and those have tapered off. So I just wanted to include a couple of slides from that presentation related to looking towards the future. Looking at the county's current population, which is estimated to be 133,033 people as of July 1, 2017, I've also looked, that's a census figure, I've also looked at the Weldon Cooper Center demographic research group information that's available. And in the past, I'd always found that Weldon Cooper's projections were very aggressive, and looking back in the past, we've never achieved the number of people that they have said we were going to achieve, but they have changed their methodology and really pulled it back, and I think that it's actually a good basis, a good expectation for the county. What I pulled out here, you can see from the map, that Spotsylvania County is in the dark orange color. It is one of the fastest-growing counties in the state, and it will continue to be a fast-growing county in the state. We will see positive growth every year. There are quite a few other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth that are experiencing negative growth. So that's the plus side, is we are growing. The, its location along I-95 proximity to both Richmond and DC rail line, there are a lot of reasons that Spotsylvania County will continue to grow. So when we're looking at about 2040, we're looking at about 181,549 people. This, yes?
Quick question, and that is, when you looked at the projection for Stafford and Spotsylvania, we do have a different area, right? I mean, we're 405 square miles, are they 205? I don't think that, are they the same size as us?
They're a little, they're smaller, but I don't think they're the same.
Yeah, so my question is, as I look at this, they're increasing more population with less land, and we have more land and we're not increasing, so I guess, is that realistic? I mean, they're going to run out of land before we do, obviously, and I see that they're, you know, we're 15,000, roughly 15,000 behind them right now, but in 230, we'll be 21,000 behind, and then in 240, we'll be close to 30, I think it's 29,000, behind them. So has that been, has that impact been ever thought of? I mean, you can't keep growing if you don't have the land.
I would have to look into that. I didn't look at Stafford and compare the counties when I was thinking through this. I'd have to go back and look at the Weldon Cooper study a little more closely, so that's something I could certainly look into.
And the only reason I ask that is because, you know, if they can't, if they don't grow at this property, it's going to come down to us, so that may increase our population a little bit more, because we have the room to grow, they, I don't think they have as much as we do.
Right, and certainly, the densities that they allow, and also, the land use policies they put in place could push the population towards us. If they put land use policies in place that preserve, seek to preserve a lot more of the land as open or rural, then that's not open for development.
Mr. Skinner, the one major difference between us and Stafford County is, we have a lot of national parks and battlefields and different things, so that would, that land, we're never going to develop, so that would probably, you factor that in, the acreage of those parks and the battlefields, that's going to put your numbers a whole lot closer.
What's the date of the Weldon Cooper study here?
It was recent. I don't know that I have it handy, but it was fairly recent, I could get that for you.
Do you know the portion of the growth that's from birth rates as compared to the portion of growth that would be from people moving to Spotsylvania County?
That I don't know, no.
I would like, I'd ask us to look at it, I just, there's an article that I have that just, from the Wall Street Journal printed on May 17, about the birth rates in America, the lowest since 1987. It goes in a great detail, and I think you said Weldon Cooper's always been a little aggressive and never really, we've always underachieved the population growth of what they predicted, but they ratcheted it back, maybe they didn't ratchet back enough, I mean, especially since we're considering what's going to happen in 20 years.
Yes, the growth rate that Weldon Cooper has, we're currently at 1.24% annual growth rate for this past year. The growth rate that's within the Weldon Cooper projections is about a 1.6% annual growth rate each year into the future. So that's, that's, yeah, that's study, so that's one of the reasons I feel like this might actually come true. So I'll look at the, I don't have the date, though, on when they did the last projections on any of my data right here, but I can get that. So this next chart here, I just put this in here to show, we were achieving that very high growth rate in the early 2000s, so you can see between 2000 and 2005, we were at 25.9% growth rate for that five-year increment, and then bringing it up to current and then into the future, just to show you, we will grow, we will continue to grow, but we won't see that high growth rate that we were seeing in those past years. So right now, the county has about 14,000 units that have been approved through rezonings and plats that are not built.
So I get, I'm sorry, back to the growth rate chart, that's the percentage over five years, it's not the annual percentage rate?
Yes, this is a five-year.
Thank you, so if you went from 2010 to 2015, and you see 5.7, that's really about 1.15 or so, 1.2?
Yes, so for the last several years, we've hovered around 1%. So the, there are about 14,000 residential units that have been approved through the rezoning and plat process that are approved.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, these 14,000 units we're talking about, over what period of time have we approved these units? How far back are we talking?
It goes, I've tried to capture all of the larger developments that are older, they might be from the early 2000s, that still have a significant number of units to build out. I've captured all of the by right residential subdivisions that are 20 units or greater. So we're looking, I haven't captured probably everything, but anything that has a significant number of units to it, going back to about 2000, is captured in the spreadsheet that I keep.
And there's always a chance that some of these subdivisions that aren't built out now won't get built out.
That's correct, that's correct. So with 14,000 units on the books essentially that could be built out, if we grow at a 2% rate, we have about 10 years to build out those units, and of course, if we grow to 2% growth, or excuse me, at a 1% growth rate, it would be about 20 years, so. True. I don't have an answer to that question, because there are a lot of variables that go into that. It's what the county can sustain at the growth, or excuse me, at the, you know, with the CIP and borrowing capacity, there are a lot of variables that go into that question.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry I didn't address you, may I continue? Okay, Wanda, but back here, you said that, and we talk about Stafford, and talk about Spotsylvania, and we will not, probably Stafford will grow faster because they're closer to Northern Virginia, and, but you said that our growing would be a positive. Why do we say it's a positive? If somebody would just give me that answer, so that I could address our citizens, you know? Do, I mean, do we say, no, we want just 1%? Or do we say we want 2%? How do we plan unless we come to that decision? Is it going to be 1%? Is it going to be 2%? And then we can plan, otherwise, we're just floating over here and don't know where we're going.
That is an approach that has been taken by the county in the past. We had a 2% growth rate goal, and of course, that was when we were well above the 2%, so it was a growth rate goal to bring it down, so that it was manageable. But another approach that could be taken is to not set a goal, because it's very, it's very hard to achieve a growth rate goal. Another way to approach it would be through ensuring that we have the policies in place to have the appropriate level of public facilities and transportation network in place as we grow, so that it is healthy growth.
To utilities, okay? We have to have a certain growth rate in order to support utilities, and that's because of hookup fees that we get, and that's, you know, so we have to have that. Where are we? What do we need for that? I think that we need an expertise that can tell us what we need. That's a large part of it.
And we are actually working with the Utilities Department right now on their water and sewer master plan update, and it's based on the comprehensive plan, and so all of this feeds into that document.
It feeds into that document, which is great, I understand that, and I understand you have to work with that. But however, feeding in that document, we need to be a part of that, so that we will understand, you know, where we are with utilities, with transportation, with industrial property, and all of these things before we can make those decisions. And this is something that I find that we are pulling for and we don't have.
And this is the perfect process to get there, the update process.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Wanda, when we set these growth rates, do we have the ability to limit it to that 2%, or the 1% or whatever it is? I know we've had these things, we've seeking 1.5% growth, but do we have the ability to make sure it doesn't do but 1.5% growth?
That would be by denying projects that come through for the rezonings.
And can we do it based on the growth rate numbers?
That would be, yes, if there is a policy in the comprehensive plan, the difficult, the difficult thing with that is, we have projects that are approved, some of them then sit for years and years and years before they move forward, and then others move very quickly. So it's very hard to know which project is actually going to move forward and which one's not, and which one trips that 2%.
Well, based on what you're just saying, I would, I would do it like this, it would be 2% each year. If we got 14,000 units, they passed all that 2%, so it would be based on what new stuff would come up within the 12-month period. Thank you.
Good, Mr. Skinner. I was doing the same thing a second ago.
I'm sorry, Carl, within three years, let's say we just set it, it's not set that right now, but if I, if we approve an application, they've got three years to start the production of that.
I think there currently is something, Wanda, and correct me if I'm wrong, with respect to the site plan process.
Right, the site plan is valid for five years.
Right, once they get to the site plan process, we'll have to see if we can limit how long a rezoning can last. I'm concerned that we might not be able to do that, but that's something we can look at.
Question, we ask these applicants a lot, when are you planning on starting this project, when are you going to finish it? We get all kinds of answers, but you're right, a lot of this stuff just lays ahead, like that 14 units, 14,000 units, been out there for years.
I think an issue there is the free market, right? The market drives the housing. If we did something like that, and not saying I'm for or against it, but it would promote the build-out of homes sooner rather than later, which, if there's not a market for it, with lower prices, just Economics 101, and if there is a market for it, it'd happen anyway. We may be, it may, if we did something like that, it would artificially put something in there to make builders, developers build out before the market would want it to, or would drive it to.
While we're on, while we're on this subject, making, you know, trying to put a limit on residential, when we have these mixed-use developments, I think we all need to consider, when we get, we approve, I'm just giving you just ballpark numbers, we approve 1,000 homes, and we get 30 acres of commercial, so that 1,000 homes, they come immediately, because that's where that developer's making his money. That 30 acres of commercial sets their vacant for X amount of years, 20, 30 years, we have no policy, no ordinance to say, hey, we need that commercial growth. That commercial and industrial land is what pays the bills.
And that triggers, we have triggers out there in these latest developments, that after a certain portion, they must, must put in like 30% of the commercial, and so that's how we control that, is we, in the agreement, in the application, we say after, you know, if it's 1,000 homes, after 250, this portion of the road, after 500 homes, the road has to be completed all the way through, and stuff of that nature. So yeah, we can control that if we put triggers on when they have to bring in the commercial.
Excuse me, I think we do have that, but I think I asked this at the last meeting, on commercial, they just have to build the building, they don't have to have anybody in it. The building just has to be there. So you've got a vacant building, setting their commercial, and then they start building all the houses.
And if I, Mr. Chairman, and if I wanted to, and it said 250 homes, I mean, you can only build 250 before you have to do commercial, I'd build 243. And then, that would be it, you know? So they don't have to put in the commercial. That's not what it should be.
Mr. Chairman. Or you can build 249, I'll help you. But I think that the core issue that is here is what is an appropriate growth rate? Because I know, back during your time on the board and mine in the early 2000s, we would have killed for a 2%, because we were told that that is the sweet spot, that's where everything works. But yet, we've seen it go below 2%, and it, I don't think anybody would say that it's perfect. So is it a percentage that we're looking for, or is it what Wanda had said, which is the level of service to keep up with whatever that growth rate is? Because the market will decide, because the question I had with the, with the numbers from Weldon Cooper was, they have been wrong, because they've been very aggressive, and so now they're dialing it back. But who in the 80s and 90s would have said, by the year 2020, besides Weldon Cooper, because I never liked their numbers anyway, would have said, we're going to be at this number? You know, it's easy to predict a couple of years, but nobody knows what's going to happen beyond that. So I think that looking at the level of service is the more appropriate measure that we could use, because a growth rate is artificial, 2% of 135,000 is much larger than 2% of 50,000. So what does, what is that actually getting us? And then going back to the commercial aspect of it, and everything is pointing to a lot of the retail and commercial going away, as we typically know it in big box. So what is it going to be replaced with? And since we rely so much on the sales tax, and if that's starting to dip, how do we replace that when we still try to need to keep up a service of the residential that is coming in, though the commercial's not following it? And I think that's, that's more of the trend that, that I see.
And it's a big question, as of today. I mean, you brought it up just a few minutes ago. You brought it up just a few minutes ago, when you was talking about people shopping online, blah, blah, blah. Sit back in my house, have it delivered. Okay, what are we going to place it with? What will our growth rate be? I mean, what do we need? What percentage do we need? And what percentage do we not need? And how are we going to fund that? And we talk about transportation, don't forget to add social services in there.
Moving on, for this next section, I'm going to, I'm going to be laying out a few questions to generate conversation, although I don't, I don't think I need to. But just to get some, get some feedback from the Planning Commission and Board, you know, we'll grab on to where's there's consensus or ideas that we need to explore further through this process. Chapter one, we've got the introduction and vision. This is the chapter that asks who we are and what we will become. The guiding goals for the county are established in this chapter, and it's the first place we look when seeking overarching guidance related to growth in the county. The vision statement itself is, "Spotsylvania families will enjoy a community that remembers and respects its place in our nation's history, and builds on the principles of our founding fathers to provide freedom and prosperity through limited government, respect for property rights, low taxes, and pro-business policies for the 21st century." So my question to the Board and the Planning Commission is, do you see any need to amend this statement at this point in time, or shall we not mark this as good and move forward? All right, that one. Quickly. Okay, so then, the rest of chapter one, the introduction and vision. What we'll be doing is, again, these are the very broad overarching guiding principles and strategies. There are four categories within this section of guiding principles, and so just looking to see if you believe that these general statements capture the realm of, or the universe of overarching policies and principles we should be looking at. That Spotsylvania County is a business-friendly community, and local job creation is a priority; that Spotsylvania County is fiscally sustainable; that the county is a family-friendly community; that agriculture and silviculture are valued components of the economy; and that Spotsylvania County values its environmental resources. Are there, is there anything else out there that we're missing here that, that we believe could, would represent the county?
No, we're just going here. I do have a question, so on each one of these, you know, the A through E, do we have the ability to show this, examples of how we've been doing this? Because to say we're business-friendly, every community's going to say, hey, we're business-friendly. How are we business-friendly? How are we, you know, valuing our environmental resources? Do we have something in the comp plan or other planning material, if you will, to back this, or, you know?
Yes, we do, in some cases, we do have it in there. In other cases, it certainly could be added, I think, related to the economic development, and we'll talk a little later, about adding a more robust economic development piece. And part of that would be talking about our economic development efforts, our targeted industry process, the various things that we are targeting, types of industries we are targeting, and what resources we have out there already. So part of the comprehensive plan is sort of an inventory of what we have, but also, then of course, we need action items for what we're going to be doing in the future.
I think it's important, especially with the business-friendly piece, when we're talking about how we're going to replace big-box income being lost, to figure out what, what are those businesses that can do that, right? Big data warehouse, the, you know, high-paying jobs are coming that support the online infrastructure needed for the big box, you know, for what's, big box is losing out to. So be interested here when we come up with, when we get to that section, thank you.
Move on from here. Chapter two is land use. Within this section, this is where we define our primary development boundary, which is our water and sewer service area. And what we did in the last update was, we looked at areas where the land could be gravity-fed, and so there were some expansions to the primary development boundary in the last update. We are receiving some requests at this point in time from people for some additional changes. Right now, we're just asking that anybody that has requested changes to either the future land use map or the primary development boundary, that they submit something in writing to planning, so that we can review all of those as part of this process and make recommendations moving forward. But one of the items that we've identified as, as potentially an issue, and this feeds right into Ms. Carter's comment about the water and sewer service being funded by the customers, and the issue that we're seeing is that we have a primary development boundary that is fairly large, and there are areas that are not yet served by the water and sewer and will not be served for a number of years. Of course, if a big economic development project comes along, the Utilities Department can work. the utilities department can work to, to make extensions. But just in the normal course of development, the water and sewer might not get to some areas that we've designated as primary development boundary for a number of years, and so we're ending up with projects coming in at a lower density on well and septic. And of course, that then takes out of the equation, land that would have been developed in the future, that would have hooked up to the public system. So, one of the items that we're, we're thinking about addressing in this comprehensive plan update is, either policies, or some sort of phased approach, not leapfrogging areas that have water and sewer to develop in other areas that, that will in the future, but don't yet, have water and sewer service. So I wanted to throw that out to the Board and Planning Commission, to see what your thoughts are related to that.
If I may interrupt again. What, what percentage of the primary settlement district is now built out? I mean, I know it's a great big area.
It's, there's a significant portion, all the way down Route One, Thornburg area. I would say we're probably, maybe at sixty to seventy percent, just off the top of my head, is.
The primary development area's been built out?
It's developed, yes.
But how long did it take? I mean, I'm trying to ask a question, and I don't know how, what size, how many acres we're dealing with here, and how long it took to get what's developed caught to where it is.
Well, the major.
Maybe a projection of how long it's going to take to finish filling this primary district out, is what I'm asking.
And what percentage doesn't have water and sewer right now?
Yes.
Know if Patrick is.
I'm here.
He's, he's been working with utilities on the, on, on the water and sewer update, and I didn't know if you might have some insight into that question.
Well, it, it is a good question, it's one that we are working towards figuring out. Right now, we are, I, along with the utilities department, are going through a process of studying what the future water and sewer demands will be, particularly within the PDB. We are looking at that question, but I, I don't have a really good answer for you at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I asked this question, okay. You're talking about primary settlement area, because I call Lee Hill and Battlefield and those places, primary settlement areas. How far are you thinking about taking it out?
I'm not proposing to expand it, staff is not proposing.
I mean, not you, I'm talking about staff.
The, the areas that are, the one area I can think of, off the top of my head, related to the primary development boundary expansion, is in the vicinity of the train station, out in that area. And, so it's not a large area, you know, there's parcels that could be developed in that area, that, that are, have been suggested by a developer to be included.
Do you have a map of the current one that you could pull up tonight, or primary settlement districts?
Let's see.
Eleven by seventeen up for a pass around.
Okay, that may be the best.
So if you're looking to the primary development boundary, it's just the dashed blue line around the colorful part of the primary development.
And where is that?
What's that?
Where is that location? I see purple and I see blue.
You're looking, the dashed blue line outlines.
In, in east, on east?
Okay, on the east side, you're looking.
And what's on west? Because you have west, and you have east, that's primary settlement.
It goes roughly from Belvedere, on the east, out to McLaws on the west, out Route Three Corridor. That was recently expanded from Andorra, we expanded out west to McLaws as part of the two thousand thirteen comprehensive plan update. And then, it comes down, the courthouse area stands independently, it comes down roughly Smith Station Road area, and then, in proximity to Route One Corridor, shoots right down to Thornburg. It's kind of like a wine glass without the, without the base on it.
Utilities and transportation that we need, areas. I mean, that's, that's where I'm coming in at. You know, we, we've got to focus on that. Now, don't get me wrong, I know your roads need paving, but however, yeah, these primary settlement areas are really important, you know? And I mean, I, I don't think, sometimes we focus on them as we should. And if that's where the growth is going to be, we need to focus more on them. We're getting beat up down here, you know, we'll let you have the solar if you want it, but anyway, I said if you want it, I didn't say that. But anyway, it's that, our focus is, is, it's just not where I believe that it should be. And when we talk about utilities, is there some way that we can, Ed, you can answer this, I know, you've been through it, but is there some way that we can require developers to have larger lines, you know, so that it can, it be extended, and take care of the industrial and commercial that we need? You know, we find ourselves that they, you know what we find ourselves at. I've worked with that long enough. But however, we find ourselves, we don't have the, the extension large enough to carry on to the commercial and to the industrial like we need to.
Yeah, we, we do, as, as areas develop, we do try to predict based upon the land use, what we're going to need in the way of, you know, commercial supply. And if a developer's putting in a line, we'll work with the developer to upsize the line, to try to get, you know, the sized line that we need. So we either work out cost-share agreements with the developer as the, as the area develops.
Stop right there. Why did we do cost-sharing? They're putting the development in, why can't they put a larger line in?
Well, because when they, when they size their lines for the development, they size it for that particular development. If we're, if we see development further down, downstream, if you will, for the extension or future service, then we'll work with the developer to upsize the line for something bigger than just their development.
So, knowing the land use, it's going to be here with residential, and knowing on down, it's going to be commercial, or right beside it's going to be commercial. There's no way that we can require the developer to put in larger lines?
Typically, when they're, typically when those developments are designed, they're designed for the sized line that feeds that particular development.
And we can't require anything else that would be larger, so that it would benefit the county?
When we do, that's when we work with the developer to pay the difference between the larger line and smaller line.
But I don't want to pay the difference.
To give you, to give you an example, you know, to, and, and if a developer is extending water service, like down, like down a road, like for instance, Mallard Drive, where the development that's going in needs an eight-inch water line, for instance, and we see a regional need in the future for something bigger than we typically pay the difference between the eight-inch line that the developer's going to put in, and the twelve-inch line, because the developer is actually paying for that water line extension. So to ask him to build something bigger than what he needs, when he's already paying for it, is not the way we've done business in the county in the past.
If I may, I have a question for you, sir. You say when they upgrade from the eight to the twelve, and we pay the difference?
That's correct.
Are we just paying for the pipe?
We, we're, we're paying.
Are we paying for labor too?
We're paying for the difference, if there's, if there's, typically, it's the, it's the material cost.
Well, that's not too bad.
No, it's not. And typically.
As long as we ain't paying the labor.
Right. I mean, if you're trenching an eight-inch pipe and a twelve-inch pipe.
It's same hole.
Exactly.
Thank you.
One quick question about water and sewer budget, since you're up there. Do we still, we've gotten away from heavy reliance on hookup fees, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, our, as we're talking about growth rate, there's really not a growth rate that's needed to support the water and sewer budget, because that's paid on by usage, not hookups?
That's, that's, that's correct. What we did was, we restructured the rates and fees, so that our debt service is an actual direct recovery cost on the bill. So it's a flat fee based upon meter size. The larger the meter, the higher the propensity for consumption, so they pay a higher rate based upon meter size. So we're using that portion of the bill to pay the direct debt service. The consumption portion of the bill basically covers our O and M, and a small portion of debt service.
And so hookup fees, now, we, we don't rely upon them to, to balance the budget, the water and sewer budget?
The hookup fees, as the hookup fees come in, that's why we've been able to go the last eight or nine years, without having to go to the bond market. We pay as we go. So, the, as the economy picks up, and we collect more hookup fees, then we actually use that money to cash fund and pay as we go, so we don't have to borrow. Because again, we've got a customer base of little over thirty thousand customers that are paying the bill for capital construction and O and M. So we try to keep the sticker shock, and keep our rates as low as we can.
Still, your hookup fee is still paying for, it's still the capital, right?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
So we do, we do use that to pay, to cash fund projects as we go.
So, so there would be a point, obviously, if your hookup fees would drop to a certain level, that you want to have the cash then to, to fund it, then you'd have to take out more debt, and that would be added on to the bill?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So related to this question, what we're really looking to do here is, we've got a primary development boundary where, you know, I think everybody agrees, we want to focus our growth primarily within this primary development boundary. It's most efficient in terms of providing services and facilities, and if we, so we want to be very protective of that primary development boundary, and, and ensure that the development that's happening in there is the appropriate type of development. So by providing some sort of policies within the, in the, within the comprehensive plan, to prioritize development where we can, where we either have the water and sewer currently, or will in the near future, over areas that are on the periphery, would probably be a good approach to achieve those goals. Without objection, I think we'll just continue to, to go down that road as we work on the update. Yes.
Do you have some specific areas that you, you would recommend, or planning would recommend to expand the primary development?
No, at this point in time, staff is not recommending expansion to the boundary. We just have some, some citizens that have submitted some requests.
Okay, thank you. I like that.
The next big category there are land use categories. What we'd like to do is just look through each of the land use categories, review them, determine whether any updates are needed. And I think a few areas where we've seen some issues are the employment center itself, you know, you're trying to, you're looking at generating jobs there, but what does that mean? Is it two jobs? Is that okay? What type of jobs? What type of industries are we trying to attract to the employment centers? The institutional land use, right now, we've got churches within the institutional land use, and we have church properties where we've had things such as cell towers proposed. And so the institutional land use really probably, the churches should probably be taken out of there, and, and reserve it for truly institutional types of uses. Mixed-use areas, there's been a lot of conversation about mixed use, both the ordinance and our policies within the comprehensive plan. What is mixed use? Can mixed use simply be an infill development in an area that's already developed, that has other mix of uses around it, and it be a single use, such as a townhouse use? What are the maximum densities that we want to see, or the minimum densities? And again, getting to that, the comment related to ensuring that the non-residential uses are phased in there appropriately with the residential uses to support those, is an important concept. Important here also is the new proffer law. The more policies and expectations that we put in the comprehensive plan to guide those cases, the better, since we can't just ask for them as we negotiate proffers. So if, so putting some very strong policy statements in here, that are the types of things that we might have asked a developer for in the past, would be beneficial. The other area that we'd like to examine is the Lake Anna area. There's a mixed-use area identified down at Lake Anna. There's no plans to water and sewers that area. We've got a rezoning proposal in at this point in time that's looking at using mass drain fields, and, and there's, it's just, how do we want, what's the vision for how that's going to develop in that area? Do we want to put some sort of package plant down there, and encourage a truly mixed-use type of resort development area? Or should we pull back on that mixed-use designation, and, and not do that?
Pull back, pull back.
Pull back? All your caving money, if you're going to pull back, we'll put it on Route Three, and Tyboe Trail and Route One.
No, we'll have to build another elementary school, high school, more fire, more EMS, more sheriff's office. We can't support it.
So you say stop the growth?
Yeah.
Period.
I'm talking about right at Livingston District, right at the lake. Yeah, I, I don't.
We'll give you more solar panels.
You can keep the solar panels. I just, I, I've heard from many citizens, they don't, they don't want that mess, and they don't want some big privately-owned or developed waste treatment thing, that if it fails, we're going to pay for in the long run. Don't want, they're already complaining about how busy the lake is now, and how dangerous it is on weekends, and stuff like that. Put that high-density stuff in there, what do you think's going to happen? Again, more density you pack in right at the lake, where our services are limited as it is, the more, the more services we're going to have to pay for in the long run. I mean, it's, the folks out there don't want all that mess. You know, put that family dollar in there, and I can't tell you how many emails and stuff I got on that, saying no, but when there's eight commercial developments right around it, it's kind of hard to say no to one that wants to go right there. I mean, but when you pack in people, that's where the issues are, is going to be for Livingston. It's just, I mean, go ahead and build another firehouse, go ahead and hire some more sheriff deputies, because that's what you're going to need.
If I'm. Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good, you're good, go ahead.
Are you sure? Okay. No, you're just asking for suggestions on refining employment centers. I know one of the things that we need to make sure that we look at, when we're looking at those employment centers, job corridors, whatever, that we have the infrastructure that is necessary. And not just roads, and not just water and sewer, but also the high fi, the fiber lines, and everything else that goes along with that, so that we have these spaces. Because you can draw a circle and say, this is an employment center, it does no good. It's like saying business-friendly without anything to back it up. You need to have some teeth behind it. And I think that if we can, especially with not having the ability to, I mean, commercial would be different than residential, but still, proffer law being as it is, if we can have more of that in there, of having the infrastructure necessary, and really having a plan, because I know that the Jackson Gateway Plan, years ago, to have the Thornburg Corridor, which was coming up, as a employment center, and the growth, and, and what we envisioned it as, but there's no infrastructure to go with it. And it wasn't only until several years ago that we got the big water and sewer lines running down that way. So that's the type of stuff that you need before you can then get, you know, the employment centers.
Well, he's exactly right on that. And the primary settlement area, of course, like I said, it's, you want to go to town to shop, and not have any commercial? I mean, is that what everybody wants, you know, that don't want the growth? Because that's what can happen. And believe me, I know how hard we had to try to get Walmart here, and they wouldn't come, because we didn't have the residential dwellings there, finally, after we started growing so much. But, I heard the men up there tonight, who are in the primary settlement area fighting for roads, that's their, and that's their job, and I appreciate that, even though I may not agree with everything, but. But I agree with what they're, what they are trying to do. And however, they've got to have, we've got to have support in the primary settlement areas. If, if we don't, then close it all down and don't have any development and then see where we are with taxes. And to support that and to support our farm and, and our utilities, you know, and what we need. So, I mean, we, we've got to focus on this. And these, these gentlemen are focused, yeah, they are. I heard them tonight, they're really focused. But however, and that's a good thing, there's nothing wrong with, that's healthy. Uh, but however, we got to focus more on it.
Um, as far as the development at Lake Anna, I understand where you're coming from. Um, with the sewage system, um, we've, we had to take over private systems in the past and it was costly to account. We don't want to get in that, I'm, I'm supporting you on that a hundred percent. Don't want to get into that, uh, that would be, that, that could be potentially a mess. But in your district, we have to look at Lake Anna. Lake Anna is a tour, is something that brings a lot of tourism here. We want tourism to come here because that supports the businesses that are there. And if we can get any kind of other commercial business around the lake, and I'm talking, uh, marinas, restaurants, things of that nature, there's no need in us losing, we already lose enough sales tax in Louisiana now. Losing the food line, all that, that's, that's one of the busiest food lines I believe I've ever seen. If we have opportunity to bring a grocery store to Sp- on Spotsylvania side of the lake or something like that, that's something that we really need to look into doing. I mean, it's because it's a convenience for the folks that live there. Uh, any, anything to draw that tax revenue to, you know, the more commercial that you have, the less out of your residents' pocket, so.
Well, good.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Marshall, but, but when we're looking at that, then, then we, we're going to have to look at, as we heard tonight from these gentlemen here about the growth down here, what it's caused to the, to the traffic and transportation issues, then we're going to have the same thing out there. We, the roads out there now, and, and you well aware, because you travel them, they don't even meet state standards. They're, they're not even hard, some of them aren't even wide enough for a school bus and a car to pass. So, right, don't say y'all, I mean, at one time, they didn't allow fire trucks to go down there unless it was full call because the road's so bad. So if, if we're going to look at, look at bringing some of that out to that end of the county, then we better start looking at, at the infrastructure and we better start looking at transportation issues, because it's going to, it's going to come. I mean, how are we going to pay for it? You're not going to pay for it with a, with a grocery store or, or.
Commercial there. Um, you know, well, John's Power Road, you hang a left and you're at a, uh, you know, restaurant and a convenience store.
Absolutely. You're right.
Hang a right there.
Well, I, I think, I mean, I, I, I mean, Mr. Benton knows probably better than I do. Most of, most of the folks out there, when you talk to them, would like for some more, more commercial come. Now, some of the things they want is not going to come because we don't have the growth. You're not going to get, you're not going to get a CVS and you're not going to get a Walmart out there. But I, I'm just saying that if, if we're looking at, at that area about developing something, then we, then we better start figuring transportation into it. And along that line, the, the problem with that is, is that we saw tonight, we, we, we passed something and we had proffers to, to do proven intersection. And then three, three years later, it's not done. And now all of a sudden, we got to figure, we got another million dollars we got to come up with because we're going to put a roundabout there and not do the turn lanes like we originally agreed. I agree. I, 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 I agree with you a hundred percent.
I'd agree with that too. I, I, I'm good with the commercial. Um, I mean, a lot of my neighbors out there, they'd rather not even see, they'd rather see nothing. They bought, you know, for generations been out there and rather stay. And a lot of the ones that have, even in recent years have bought out there, went out there specifically where they don't hear the fire trucks and have all the traffic and all that stuff that goes on down this way. Uh, they just don't want the stuff. You put a doctor's office or something like that where they can go, they're all for it. But no, I'm, I could some, uh, support, uh, some commercial, but I'm, I don't want that high density, you know, townhomes right on the lake or some mess like that. It's just, we're, we're asking for a lot more, so just, and I know you were up and down 208 now. I know when I come to an intersection of lawyers in 208, I, I used to never have to wait. I mean, never. And within the last couple of years, I'm sitting there for, wow, I'm like one of the ones complaining on a stoplight. Two cycles of stoplights to get, get onto the, the main artery. You know, I, I never saw that. I would have never fathomed that happening. And that's without the summer. That's, that's outside of the summer, all the visitors. Oh, yeah. I've had to stop because I can't get through the traffic backed up for the state park. So, I mean, literally, uh, if we're going to, if we're going to, you know, commercial good, high density growth out there, it, it's, like I said, you might as well go ahead and put in smart scale for the, uh, four-laning of 208 and go ahead and do some other large-scale projects out there, because it's, it's getting jammed up as it is and a lot of, Louisiana's allowing development like there's no tomorrow out there, out that way. And they're all traveling 208. I'll get off my soapbox, sorry about that.
So it sounds like definitely looking at Lake Anna, converting that away from mixed use and more towards local-serving commercial and tourism-oriented commercial services. So, okay. Alright, so the next chapter is the transportation and thoroughfare plan chapter?
Wanda, if I might, just back to the mixed use. It's, it's not so much areas, but how we define it. And I think I'd definitely like a relook at how we define mixed use, because I know that our boards approve mixed use. And then all I see is a, a bunch of apartments that happen. So that would be, with the concurrence of everybody here, that we relook at how we define mixed use and it not just mean build apartments and then some commercial.
If, if I may piggyback on that, when we did this mixed use thing, it was what, five elements involved in it? Is it what town?
Right, the mixed use one through five, yes.
One through five. I had the impression we were going to have to require at least three of these elements on every single one of them. But we've been passing some of these things, uh, like fill-ins.
Right, the infill.
You've got a single home development here and you've got this two acres left in the middle of this development. And then we go put a bunch of townhouses in it for mixed use fill-in. Well, that's not the rest of the community. You've changed the complete complexion of this community, it's destroyed now, it's something else.
Right, so, so definitely want to see a mix of uses, not simply using it for infill.
These guys are, are coming in here because the way we've got this thing, abusing it, I'll just say it. And they're getting these special, these mixed use things passed and it's what I just described. And it changes the complexion of our neighborhood, it's been settled for fifteen, twenty years. And nobody likes that.
So the transportation and thoroughfare plan, um, we'll, we'll be going through and updating the, the policy strategies and studies that have completed, been completed since last update, which actually occurred in 2016. An important component of this, I think, is going through that thoroughfare plan list, that's our project list, um, and prioritizing them or scaling them in such a way, you know, even this evening, there was discussion about, you know, how, how should we prioritize these projects so that when funding comes up, we, we have a plan for how to move forward? Um, and then also, um, any new road connections that the planning commission and board want us to consider in this comprehensive plan update? You know, I know the one is still sort of out there on the fringe. Are we going to extend Spotsylvania Parkway out to Gordon and then perhaps on up to Three? You know, that was reviewed a couple of years ago now and, and we didn't move forward with that amendment at that time. But there still seemed to be some desire or potential, uh, study, uh, desire, um, related to that project. And so I wanted to see if there are any board members or planning commissioners that have, you know, a desire to move forward with that road or any other road segments within this update.
Thank you. Do we have the capability of actually doing that right now? Because it's, it's been a priority. I mean, I believe the Spotsylvania Parkway was, um, was the original plan and it was by, uh, Congress, Congresswoman, um, who passed away then. Joanne Davies, right? She passed away, but one of the things I believe in it was, um, Mary Lee, you might have been on the board at that time. And that was, that was the initial work to go ahead and set for a bypass going around. Now, since that time, many years, but the question is, do we actually have the land available to do something like that now?
It probably wouldn't be what was originally proposed. We'd have to look at alternatives. But I believe there is still land, especially, at, at least the, the portion out getting to, um, Gordon Road. That hasn't changed that much since we looked at it a couple of years ago. But, um, I, I'm not familiar with what route the road took to get from there to Route Three. But there has been a fair amount of development within that path. So it may even be that it's, uh, Gordon Road is expanded.
Could, could the planning staff or planning look at that and say, and give us some options? I mean, what, what's available and what are options? And because we've been pushing this can down the road for many, many, many years. And I think it's a key to the infrastructure around here that we need to cut back on Three and cut back on One and stuff of that nature. I mean, we just have so many primary roads. We do need another bypass. And if it can be, it could be limited access too.
If I can chime in on you with that. We need another bypass, but while we're on this transportation thoroughfare. And it says, "Infrastructure for Big Boxes." Where do we have it at? Where is it? Where's the transportation? Infrastructure for Big Boxes. I'm asking that question. And we're on chapter three here. And we talk about the transportation. And I'm going where you came in earlier. And you said, "Infrastructure for Big Boxes." Are we going to focus on Big Boxes?
I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke or something. I don't remember saying transportation for Big Boxes.
No, you didn't. I'm saying it.
Oh, okay.
You said, "What are we going to do for infrastructure for Big Boxes?" Okay. I'm in, when Big Boxes are looking and it's jobs, and that's what we all want to focus on, they are looking for the best way that they can get in and out and don't have to go through a lot of traffic. I mean, that's, that's what they are reviewing. So where, where are we with that? I mean, I, I, I don't know how in the world that lanes down Mine Road and Two and Seventeen is going to take much, much more attracting trailers and things. I, I just don't see that. But there's industrial property all around there. So are we going to focus on that? Or are we just going to leave it like it is?
I think, I, I think that's going to be part of the, um, prioritized list. Figuring out which roads have the greatest benefit to improve sooner rather than later. And also taking into account cost, of course.
I, I, I think that's the key, because at the last committee, we went through that list. And I believe, you can correct me, eighty-eight million dollars to Ford Lane Seventeen, Two and Seventeen? And I'm not sure if that was.
Doug, was that just a benchmark road or all the way to Seventeen?
Eighty-seven million.
Seventeen. So, and, and, and look, we do have a new, we have IDX. And what do they bring in? They bring in a lot of box trucks and everything. And the reality is, I don't know if we're ever going to get eighty-eight million dollars unless, unless the state comes up through the federal government, stuff of that nature. So the question is, we don't look at, we look at how we move traffic faster, not necessarily more traffic. And that's what on Two right now is playing, that we only have the money, I believe it was eighteen million, that we can move traffic faster because we go to each intersection. And then we're going to, uh, improve the flow through that intersection, so there's not a backup. So, and I'm not sure with funding and stuff, the way we do it, I don't know where the, what the answer is. I don't see the state giving us more money. We know that, uh, Smart Scale is stepping down, doesn't have as much money. I don't even know how long Smart Scale will last. Uh, I think that's thrown up every year. And again, that's, I don't know if Mark can feed in on any of that, but those are the type of things that we, 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 we can have good ideas, but we don't have the funding. We shouldn't be wasting our time and trying to figure that out. We should figure out what's the, the best way, the more efficient way to move the traffic. And that might bring the cost down, be more realistic.
I can't put this pin inside of a little pin because it won't fit. So therefore, if I'm going, if going to focus, and you say, "Good, Dave, we really got, we got this big box coming in." And that's wonderful. We got these jobs coming.
Well, just, uh, as far as the bypass, I mean, putting a line on a piece of paper, I don't mind, but I, I think we need to focus on the things that we don't have right now and already in planning for these road systems, instead of just keep steadily expanding and expanding and expanding. You know, that bypass is going on the Garnett property, which is Berkeley and Livingston. And, you know, they have a nice, number one, a beautiful piece of property that is, I think, most everybody comments on when they're traveling 208. And, uh, they certainly don't want it developed at this time for a road. It cuts into their business, cuts their farm into two-piece, well, more than that. Bides the farm all up and they have a business there. So we need to be cognizant of that. You know, the county may not be condemning, but somebody is. And we say, well, at least a number of folks here on the board say they don't want, you know, they're for land rights and don't want to be taking, condemning property. Well, we are. We're telling VDOT we want a road here. And VDOT's going to take it. If we push the issue, so.
Yeah, but see what our options are. We got to look at what the options are.
I don't mind looking.
Garnett's not the only one. And, you know, there may be a way that we wouldn't ruin their land. Maybe there is a small portion that we can take away from it, it too. Because, you know, sooner or later, they're going to have a problem bringing all their horses, because every year you see a new field, a new track that they put in down there. And they're getting filled up, and so what are they going to want in the future? You know, that's, and a lot of people won't come to events if it's hard getting in and hard getting out. But it's a, it's a, it's a win-win solution.
I don't mind looking at, and I don't mind the pen on paper. But I, to start moving forward when we have so many projects that aren't even close to being financed and saying, "Well, here's another road that we want, let's, you know, submit for this one." I just, I'd like to focus on the ones we have on the, pen to paper and make them come to fruition before we go pushing for another eighty-seven million dollar project. And that's probably not even coming close to what it would be, that we don't have the money for. I just, uh, like I say, I, I, let's focus on what we need, on our, our priorities that we've already established as far as some road construction. That's all I'm saying. I don't mind planning and putting it on a piece of paper, but, uh, move forward, taking somebody's property and stuff like that when it's probably fifty years down the road before we get anything. I just don't, I, I don't want to do that to be a focus.
Well, Greg, to be honest with you, you don't have the backups we have. You don't have the weights. When I go out to Lake Anna, I don't get a backup. I don't stop. I, it doesn't take me, or even what David says. It takes you, what, fifteen, twenty minutes to go, what, three, four miles on Route Three? And if you like, uh, Route One right now, you're going to find that Route One's going to be unsustainable here within three or four years. So the question is, how do we divert that traffic? You don't have that out there because you have a lot of backroads and you have a, a main road that doesn't have a lot of stuff out there, which is good for you. But you got to look at what we've got to do and how we solve the problems of getting fire engines, getting policemen out there and stuff of that nature. So I, I think we do need to consider how we, we flow, whether it be limited access roads. Because when you put new roads, people build new projects next to them. If we put limited roads, limited access roads out there, then it's one way, it keeps the traffic flowing. So just remember that too.
I understand, but it's just, you know, folks chose to buy where they, where they buy. You know, they can come out here and travel my roads and have ten acres and relatively quiet, but I just, you know. Yep, there you go. Well, I guess we better move on, else we're going to be here all night.
What, one, one last thing on the, uh, on the bypass. I think that we do need to put it on paper, because I think the last time we talked about it and we looked at where would that connection be, there was already a subdivision in the way. And so if you don't at least put it, it down, whether you have the money for it or not, whether it will be built in the future or not, if it's part of your. If it's part of your overall plan of what you're looking for, then you can grow accordingly. But if you don't, you're, we're going to wind up like Prince William and, and talk, talk to the folks in Prince William who had to build the Parkway, Prince William Parkway, years ago, and how much it cost, because it was so developed and they had to use alternate routes. And the, the price tag was huge. And if we can just learn from that, we're not the only county that's ever had growth, nor that has gone through what we're going through. So why don't we learn from the mistakes that have been there before us? And we change as we go along, but I think that that is an integral part of connecting Route Three over to Massaponix. And we need that connection at some point. And so if we at least put it down, as that area grows, we can maybe get proffered lands for that area. We could get houses that aren't put in the way that we then have to condemn years from now. So it's just, it's, it's planning, it's not taking it now, but it's saying, "This is where we think we want it to go." And then you get community buy-in also, which I think is very important.
While we're on transportation, I want to bring up the issue we have with our design standards and ordinances we have on sidewalks here in Spotsylvania County. Two reasons, just to make it easy to understand. We're building sidewalks that go to absolutely nowhere. And we're requiring sidewalks on some projects on ditch-lined roads. I understand having, if you've got curb and gutter, you have a place for water to go. But when you have a ditch on both sides of the road, that stormwater, when it rains, the water's going to go somewhere. And requiring these sidewalks, I say, it's, I think we've gotten way out of hand. I understand the grand scheme of things, everybody, we want to have a sidewalk where we can walk anywhere in Spotsylvania County. People like to run, exercise, it's a great thing, but it just doesn't work in some places. My district's a prime example of where it doesn't work at. If we approve, if you already have a subdivision approved with no curb and gutter, to require them to put sidewalks on both sides of the ditches is, I think, ridiculous. I think we need to look at these ordinances, look at these design standards, and we need to rework them. I'd be happy, like I say, if anybody else on the panel agrees with me, how, how we need to go about this, so.
But you got to look at the future here. And I think what we do have, by the way, Kevin, and that is, we have a plan where we can not, we, we don't ask them to build the sidewalks, but put the money in a fund, sidewalk fund, for the future, because we don't know what's going to be. We don't know if Massaponix Church Road someday will be a four-lane highway. Okay? And in that case, where we need the sidewalks, we will have it. It shouldn't be our responsibility to approve an application and not think of the future, that we may need sidewalks that way. Now, within the development, I understand what you're saying. But there is a fund, and I think Wanda will explain this, that we can put, ask them to not build the sidewalk, but put the cost of that sidewalk into that fund so that it can be used either in the future or, as it says right now, in another project. And that way, at least if we have to come back and build a sidewalk, let's say in your area, it will have already been paid for, but using a different project. So it's not really coming out of the county.
And how do you determine who's going to pay that? Because we've got, we've got a sidewalk on Route One right now that, there's a six-foot fence on one side of it, a six-foot fence on the other side of it. One, one part belongs to VDOT, another part belongs to a trucking company. I'm pretty sure that, that neither one of them are going to put sidewalks in anytime soon. I mean, you get to that point in certain, certain areas to where, I understand, you know, why would I, why if I owned a piece of land and there was no chance of me ever having, you know, needing a sidewalk or wanting a sidewalk, why should I pay into that fund? Certain, you know, where it wouldn't work at. I understand, I'm, you know, if it's a piece of, if it's a piece of land, like you're saying, you know, Massaponix Church Road, we're, you know, fifty years from now, we say we want to, we may want a sidewalk there. That certain area, yeah, let's require them to pay into the sidewalk fund. But if it's an area where it's not going to go, it's, it's never going to happen, let's not require them to pay into that.
One solution that we've been talking about amongst staff is developing essentially a map where we say, "Along these corridors, we want sidewalks, period." These are, these are areas that are, have developed, there's infill happening, sidewalks make absolute sense at this point in time. Other areas further down the road where we're seeing these piecemeal sidewalks come in, and it might be, you know, five, ten years before we have a, a good segment of sidewalk, maybe there's the option there that, that they pay into the fund. But it's an area that we ultimately see as needing sidewalks because of our future land use map. So I think, you know, it's something we could work through along the, the, the main roads in terms of figuring out where do we want sidewalks, coming up with a map. And that way, everyone can just look at the map and know the expectation. Within subdivision, sidewalks are required for single-family detached homes on twenty-five thousand square feet or less. I think, I know the case you're speaking of where they, they got an exception to put in ditch section, section roadways. But the sidewalk wasn't waived. So that's a little bit of an anomaly there in that situation. Because generally, you don't have sidewalks on ditch section roads. It's the small lots which, which per our code require curb and gutter and sidewalks. But, but in, I think that case, there was an, an exception granted to allow for ditch section.
I have those subdivisions in my, in my district. I have Timberlake, I have Lancaster's Gate, they're ditch road subdivisions. You can ride in any of them. People are still walking on the edge of the road, they're jogging, pushing baby strollers. Haven't had any accidents that I can recall of any of these places, as far as a safety issue. It's to put a sidewalk where the water has to go somewhere, that's my issue. There, we're not talking about a flat, we're not, it's not flat terrain, hills and gullies and different things. That would force, I don't know what the cost would be for a sidewalk if you went to Timberlake and had to put a sidewalk on both sides of the road with the way that subdivision is laid out.
Yeah, so generally, in, in, in most cases in ditch section, subdivision sidewalks are not a requirement, because the lots are larger.
Well, I believe that, that way that we can also get around that is that the streets are wider. And we have that in the Hill subdivision. The streets are wide, people walk their dogs very comfortably and right on the road. And I mean, you know, it's just made wider. And the baby strollers are rolled up and down, you know, and, and this is, this is one way to really get in to do, helping the residents and also the developer and just make the streets wider.
So to take action on this, do we wait for the planning department to produce this map from staff, or?
Yeah, if.
And we can review the, you know, the design standards all at the same time?
Yeah, I think because sidewalks are addressed in a number of different places. But, but the basis for the waivers and modifications that are allowed in the design standards manual is that it has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So if we had some guidance in the comprehensive plan that, that we could say, "Yes, this is consistent, clearly." You're in, you're in the, you know, twenty to thirty-year range of needing sidewalks, therefore paying into the fund is appropriate, or, you know.
Right. We don't have that at all.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we, so certainly, yeah, it's something that we could wrap into this process, and it would also bleed over into our ordinances as well.
So what we've been doing right now, we're just saying, "Hey, hey, Greg, you going to build a subdivision? I think you need a sidewalk." But we don't have, we don't have any layout. We never know.
Oh, we do. Yeah, we do.
But we, doesn't match a comprehensive plan. You just said, said that.
Uh, well.
And that's what we go by, right?
Right. No, what I'm saying is, our, typically, we don't get that far. We, the ordinances are there, and if you have a smaller lot subdivision, you put in curb and gutter and sidewalk, and there's no, there's no discussion.
I know there's some state standards, too, that we, maybe we can look into matching up with them.
But, yeah, so, so we do have the standards, but anytime, there are some provisions that allow for waivers and modifications. And then, of course, there's the exception process, which is through the Planning Commission, and that's separate. But, yeah, I, we've, we've heard the criticism and complaints, and so we've started to think about sidewalks, so we can.
So I'd like to get the ball rolling on that soon as we could.
What is the timeframe for this to actually get some?
Well, after.
With all the input you're getting?
Yeah, so, so after tonight, taking in all the input that we received this evening, we're going to be working on a timeline as the next step.
Okay.
So, that'll, that'll be, that'll be forthcoming soon. And then the final component of this is, we do have a, a transportation committee, and so it seemed appropriate to, for staff to work with the transportation committee, especially through the prioritizing of the roads list would be the, probably the biggest thing. To work with the transportation committee to get their feedback before we move forward to Planning Commission.
I, I'd like to add that. I, I think every board member needs to be, have an input. I mean, the, the committee is okay when we need to decide maybe a priority or something like this. But I, I, we got seven members here that have needs in each of their own development district. And I think, I'd rather have a session with the board itself and say, "Look, I think everybody needs to put an input in there." And then get the feel for what they want, then maybe let the committee take everything into perspective and then give a recommendation back to the board, but.
All right, Chapter Four is the Public Facilities Plan. Not going to say too much on this one, because what we really do is, we feed out each of these different components that we have listed here. Public schools, fram, sheriff, solid waste, water and sewer, library, parks and recreation. And staff recommends a general government category that, that we don't have now. When we went through with the discussion about the social services building, we didn't have a lot of policies that were very specific to general government on which to evaluate that. So something like social services or, you know, any other general government facility would be included in that section. And then I, I, what we'll do is, we, we'll feed these out to the appropriate departments and agencies and get their feedback, you know, especially focusing on levels of service, short-term needs and long-term needs. And I starred the ones that are the proffer eligible facilities, and those are the ones I think we wanted, in particular, focus on ensuring we have the appropriate language in there so that the county can justify accepting cash proffers or dedications of land for rezonings associated with these facilities. Anybody have any comments?
Yeah, well, I'll comment on that solid waste and collection. I, I think we need to push to do more recycling. And also, I, I, I want, I want our county to be aggressive in, in coming up with different ways to, instead of just burying this mess. You know, we got six hundred acres out there that could be used for a whole lot of other things, other than trash heap, basically. And I want us to really push to use new innovation to get away from that. I think there's a, technology's coming. I know it's expensive right now, but I think it's coming and is right around the corner where, tired of all this stuff being buried, and then, and nobody's going to want to build a home there. And I'm not sure, you know, people complaining about a solar farm that, with mosquitoes and everything else, all that list. Can you only imagine what is under all that stuff and putting a ball field or something like that? And people don't even think twice of putting a ball field on top of that stuff and having their kids run around it and muck around it, so. As far as parks and recs, at least for Livingston, I want, need to. We've had a nice sign up on Belmont Road now for, I don't know how, how many years it's been, I don't, I don't know how many years. With a pretty, yeah, ten years or so with a pretty, pretty pasture out there, but not one thing on it. You know, what, what was initially, you know, wanted, you know, tennis court or baseball field. That was quickly reduced down to a walking path and a, a hut to eat under. I don't think that's fair to, fair to my district or anybody's district, really. Like to, like to move, in the next few years, if I'm still on board, to have something completed there. Or either take down the side and take down a little bit of parking that you can't even turn around in and be done with it. Quit messing around with it if we're not going to do nothing with it.
Just two things real quick. One is the solid waste collection. Over in the eastern part of the county, we're going to need something. Harrison Road is backed up and backed, it's only going to get worse. So we do need a, a larger facility over there. The green dumpster collection areas are fine, but we have a lot of debris, trees, grass, all that type of stuff. And also, if we have a larger recycling area over that way somewhere, if we're planning ahead and thinking ahead. Library facilities, we've already talked about one down in Cosner's Corner area. And we're moving forward to, to find a location for that. As far as parks and rec, one of the things that's been brought up is our pool facilities, indoor pool, indoor stuff that we might need to, to have. And I think that we really should take a look at that and see if there is some part of the county perhaps centered in the PSD, just because that's where the population is, that we could find a area big enough that we could begin that process to build whatever it might be. Loryella is a, a nice park, and we need to complement that with even more facilities.
Chapters Five and Six are natural resources and historic resources. We actually don't see the need to do a lot of updates to these sections. They've worked well from staff's perspective as, as we've used them to evaluate cases. One thing I do note, though, is under the natural resources, there is a Chesapeake Bay Act that governs Spotsylvania County. And there are some requirements that are related to the comprehensive plan. And so we'll be getting some feedback from them. So that is one caveat there. We may need to add some policies to be in compliance with the Chesapeake Bay Act as we move forward.
You know who to contact for that?
Excuse me?
You know who to contact for that? Eldon James?
Oh, okay. Eldon James is who with that?
Actually, you got a member of the River Basin right there.
That was a good question tonight, one of the citizens came up from Farm Lake in that area. Mr. Greer, or, I, I can't think of his last name, but he mentioned that because they cut all this down. And then we had such, you know, heavy rains and the runoffs and everything. So was that something that we need to look at, because did we go against the Chesapeake Bay Act? Or is, is what they did was legal and, and being able to control it?
Under the forestry regulations, I believe that, you know, Troy has been out there and looked at it. And I, I believe, as I understand it, everything is according to the forestry regulations.
If I may, the state, the state forestry department regulates that portion of it when you're cutting a piece of timber. They make you have setbacks and creek crossings and different things. The state, the state handles that through forestry. Of course, make sure they make, they meet the requirements of Chesapeake Bay.
Well, I, I just have this one question, because when they cut that land down for the solar panel, they cut it right up to the edge. There was no setbacks left.
There's, there's no, there's no requirement by the Chesapeake Bay Act for you to have a property license.
How about the forestry?
There's no, there's no requirement on property.
There's no, there's no requirement. They do, they do that all the time. They, they, all that timber, timbering they do, that's how they do it all the time. They, I mean, they're making money. It's a business. They're not going to leave anything standing.
It wasn't for us power. They've, they've been cutting out there for two years. I mean, Lily, and it's all, all over the Livingston District. I don't know what, I'm sure they're cutting Berkeley, too.
Yeah, we cut timber all the time. Berkeley District has it happen all the time. You cut up right, right through the line. That's on every timber tract.
They've been cutting timber off Oakley since I was in high school, nineteen fifty-nine, okay? I remember when they used to haul tractor trailer loads of split wood, cordwood to go to New York. And they were getting three hundred dollars a cord for it back in nineteen sixty-four. And they hauled them out truck after truck.
All right, second to last slide. Additional topics that staff is recommending, a, a new chapter focused on economic development. I talked about that a little bit. What are, what do we have in place and, and what do we need to put in place in order to support economic development in the future? Ensuring that we have a, a vision of what we see as economic development. And then additional policies, just to boost up what we have related to housing, broadband provision, emerging industries and development trends, the revitalization of areas. Route One is an area that's been brought up a number of times. And then looking more specifically at some areas that are just beginning to develop, such as Thornburg. What's the vision for that area?
Well, Chairman, if I may, so the economic development chapter, I think it's a very important chapter. Because what happens is, when you start doing these strategic planning, right, and you really look at it from, from a future land use and bringing those employment centers in or bringing some commercial centers in, things of that nature. Yes, realtors are out there doing their thing. However, you know, economic development and, and Tom's group over there are trying to get those big users to come in, right? So they're trying to fulfill, help fulfill that strategic goal with some of the tactical decisions along the way. decisions along the way. And so I think including them is very important, because if you run a business, you run a company of strategic goals, but you have to have those tactical goals. Because if you're not executing those that are attainable to meet that strategic goal, it's just not gonna happen. All this comprehensive plan, planning can be great if you don't have somebody kind of doing that. And so having an economic development chapter, I think, is pretty important. I know it's a little late, not that we have to have any discussion on it right now, but I think that's key to making this entire process work.
Certainly, you know, can't fit everything in this evening, so if you have any ideas about any of these topics that we've talked about this evening, please let us know, we can work them into the update process. Finally, as I mentioned, we are currently receiving some future land use map and primary development boundary requests, which we'll wrap into this process and evaluate them all as a whole. We're, written comments by citizens at any time to planning at spotsylvania.v a.us. What we envisioned doing was coming up with a draft first, and then bringing that to community meetings so that the public could react to a draft. And it may be that we end up breaking it out into a couple of different focused community meetings, and we did talk about having the community meetings at several locations throughout the county so that they're convenient. Bringing that back to the Planning Commission to make revisions based on input, and then having a Board of Supervisors work session, again, going back and creating a final draft, and then moving on to public hearings. And I think that it sounds to me like one earlier work session that we need to have with the Board of Supervisors is related to the transportation chapter.
If I may, I remember, one more time, back on this additional topics, we've got broadband here.
Yes.
We need, the county, there's parts of this county that don't have broadband. School systems have made it so that all the kids are working on computers. I have problems in my own house, and I'm just behind the mall. This additional policy, is this a suggestion to the county fund broadband?
No, not, that's not.
We just wanted to discuss to see what we can do, and maybe we can draw in to make it happen.
What we can do to encourage broadband throughout the county. So we can include policies in the comprehensive plan so that when development does incur, does occur, we're encouraging the provision of the broadband, consistent with that development to bring it down the road. So probably looking more towards the private sector doing it.
Well, the broadband thing is important to me. I sat on the commission, the cable commission for a while, and it's total, everybody came in and complained, complained, complained that they can't get the internet, and the cable companies won't, half of them won't honor their obligations and finish out subdivisions, or they come up with a reason why they don't have to finish them. And they're not allowed to have competition down the same road. So this is an important subject here, so. So whenever we can move on that, I'm on board.
On the broadband, I took and sent to IS three different types of technology that's being used, Kentucky, West Virginia, old coal mining towns where, one of them, they even pulled the railroad up from where they had the coal mine. Guess what, they've got broadband. They're using satellites, they're using white channels, there's a whole lot of different technology out there. And I sent that, everything I had, I sent it to IS, and they'll be reporting in the near future back to the board if we can use that technology here in Spotsylvania, if we can make it happen or not, so.
You all set?
That's it.
All right, I'll take the Planning Commission out of the work session, and with that, the Chair will make a move to adjourn for the Planning Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Wanda, thank you.
A resolution to adjourn the closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn the closed meeting for discussion of assignment, appointment of promotion, performance to motion salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the county, specifically the county administrator, the county attorney, an employee of the Department of Information Services, and an employee of the Department of Utilities. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn the closed meeting for discussion concerning its prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, specifically a healthcare industry, a recreational and entertainment business and technology business. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn the closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding traffic and public safety and stormwater facilities. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A1, 5, and 8, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Yakubowski. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Skinner.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
And Chair's aye.
And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby return to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Chair aye.
Mr. Chair, I would respectfully request a motion for the board to approve the contract with the county attorney.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Yakubowski to approve the contract for the county attorney. Any discussion? Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Skinner. Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Chair aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Yakubowski, they're all ayes.
Aye.
Any nays?